15th page, the regular session of the federal council of conduct order. We will start with the flagrant. All by law.
President Miller.
Here.
Vice President Allen.
Here.
Councilman O'Meara.
Here.
Councilman Barrett.
Here.
Councilman O'Meara.
Here.
Councilman O'Meara.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Solicitor counsel.
Present.
Chief Myers.
Here.
Chief Perez.
Here.
E M C Wardle.
Here.
Manager Soderstein.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Do I have any comments? Now we'll move forward to the mayor's court.
Thank you very much. February 15th, Assistant Mechanicsburg Chamber of Commerce. We've been cutting that negative water. He drives, they provide well, healing and water service. Mark Hurst, once 25 years as Vietnam veterans at Mechanicsburg. March 12th, officially no fee wedding in the Nuts and Book Department of Rivers, True Valley, Hardware. Mechanicsburg Museum Association's newly exhibit, African American Soldier in Civil War. Station dispatch, there's extra copies on the back if you wish to know more about it, or if you're more involved with the museum. The Joseph T. Simpson Library is showing over 700 people per day this holiday. Simpson's signature selections, fundraising campaign this month, mirror on the back table. Hey, Bonn, the annual building on South Side of Allen Street has been purchased by the Joseph T. Simpson Public Library, including Grace T. LeFaut. I have a presentation at this time for Chief Myers, and I'm coming to you. [laughter]
Detective Law and Personal Operations, Mechanicsburg Police Department, 38 years of service award. Senator Margaret A. Morris, date of service began was March 12th, 1984. On behalf of the Mechanicsburg Police Department, I'd like to acknowledge and thank you for your service to the community. Completing each year's service is a testament to your dedication and commitment to the Mechanicsburg Police Department. Your integrity, sense of duty, loyalty to this police department shows immeasurably dedication and commitment to our community. We want to wish you success in your continuing service with the Mechanicsburg Police Department.
Thank you. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Man, this is interesting. Um, I have a few small items to mention, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gray. So, uh, we had, uh, we met, Danielle and I met with our risk management group for our workman's talk, and moved us up to a 90 from an 85, so we're doing really well. Uh, one of the other things that we did, that I did just the past two weeks was, we reached a base for whatever renovation worth of the slide, so that bid today was the last day for questions. We've got no questions on clarification, bids are due the 28th. Uh, and then I will have those ready for Tuesday, some Tuesday following, for council to onward or reject our bid to go with that. Uh, I meant, on the 10th, we had a joint RAN meeting at the, at the Kinnearburg Academy. Uh, it was partially attended, it was two representatives from Upper Allen, myself, Fania, and Greg Longwell, representing the school, so, uh, we talked about their summer programs, the lack of participants, their employees, uh, and the trouble we're all having trying to get employees to come in. So, um, that's, that's all that I have right now. I will defer to Dr. Jane Gray, with Downtown Mechanicsburg Partnership, the Renaissance Committee, she has a topic she'd like to discuss with us.
Thanks, Roger.
Yep.
So, the, the reason that Roger has deferred to me is because of a very large grant application that the Downtown Mechanicsburg Partnership has been working on to help fund the construction of Center Square. Those of you who've been paying attention, you know that there will be a demolition of the square coming up on Saturday, the 26th, as I see that your invitation. Right there, you are, in fact, all invited. It's going to be a very historic day in Mechanicsburg, which will be the first time in 70-plus years that there's been any kind of, um, demolition construction, attention to a comprehensive plan that was developed a number of years ago, uh, that suggested that we have an open green space in Mechanicsburg, which, as you know, driving up and down through the borough, there's not a lot of that here. This will be community space, this will be space for, that will serve as a magnet for business and commerce development, that will bring people into the downtown, into our businesses, and will serve as a place of entertainment, ceremonies, festivals, other sorts of activities within the borough, that will help bring people from all these new developments that are coming up in this area, as well as serving primarily the citizens of Mechanicsburg. It's a, um, a promise that was made 200 years ago that's finally being kept. Um, and so, as a tribute to that, and as our, the partnership's interest in wanting to promote economic development in this downtown, we are submitting a million dollar grant to the, what, the LSA Gaming Commission Fund. I know Rebecca has talked about that in the past, in this ring. It is for precisely the sort of information, uh, needs that we have for the borough. Uh, and that means creating a park, creating some street paving, safety issues, bike issues, transportation, traffic calming, all of those things that are making a, a place attractive and useful and utilitarian for, for everybody. So, uh, I want you all to wish us luck. I'm told that grants very rarely are funded at the full amount that you, that are requested. So, I'm, it could be $10, or it could be, um, more. Uh, I'll take whatever the, the state feels is appropriate. Uh, I want to tell you, this is, uh, in my previous life as an academic, I've written grants, but there's never been a grant that I've written like this one. And I suspect as I continue to write grants for the, the borough, I'll have learned a lot and will get better and better at it. Uh, but I think this is a pretty good under grant. I think it's very comprehensive. Uh, I figured out what the lingo is, and we got them. Uh, and I owe a lot to Kyle and to Roger for their help with this, and especially considering that we have invited the borough to kind of serve as our surrogate. That's, I'm not even sure, that's the right term, Roger?
Municipal sponsor.
Municipal sponsor for the grant, which will be an enormous boost, I think, for us as we, as it goes through the process of, uh, review at the state level. And, um, I'm grateful ever to Kyle and to Roger for helping the partnership see us in getting this grant submitted. It got submitted 26th this morning, deadline date was today, uh, but now we, we have to sit and wait until probably January till we hear anything about awards, but, uh, the, and what, so what this means is that we will, whether it's the partnership, will have complete responsibility for this grant, where the borough has no responsibility other than its charity, its municipal sponsorship of the grant. Uh, and we intend to, as we have in the past, stay in touch, close collaboration with the borough, uh, not only for this grant, but there are several others on the, the docket for, um, other parts of our three-phase revitalization plan. So, that's, that's it in a kind of a nutshell, about your kind of nut that is, but anyway, in a nutshell, is there anything, Roger, or Kyle, that you think would be appropriate for us to bring up at this point?
No, unless anyone has any questions for Dr. Gray. No? Okay.
Super. Thank you. One of his numbers is nothing left to say.
Thank you. We're back. We keep our fingers crossed.
Yes, we're keeping fingers and toes crossed. Yes, almost.
Jane, you and I were talking about that NAICS number. That was...
Oh, that, that was a terrible.
It didn't mean twice until I figured out that it was your NAICS number. Ours was right, so, uh, yeah, it was, it was, it was an experience. So, we got it figured out, um, and Jane submitted everything, and that's, there will be, there's an agenda addition for that, sir.
Okay. Anything else for you to report?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. May I ask for approval of the agenda, add or remove items from the consent agenda or regular agenda? I think we have two items to add to the consent.
I do, they both, actually both concern DMP, so, um, action to approve Resolution 6, 2022, to act as the municipal sponsor toward Downtown Mechanicsburg Partnership with the statewide local shares of Sethup Green. Uh, and then the second one is action to approve Resolution 7, 2022, recognizing DMP and Renaissance Mechanicsburg Committee for the Phase 1 start of the Renaissance Project.
Thank you. Are there any amendments or changes proposed in this? You have a motion for approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Mr. Barrett. Ms. Barrett, some checkers, and the agenda is approved. You have a motion for approval of the consent agenda, and all the items on the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Booker makes that motion. You have a second.
Second.
You have a second. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Fall opposed?
Aye.
You may now turn to the regular agenda. Financial administration ordinance, Mr. Anthony.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to have PFM do a presentation in the past week, as opposed to waiting another couple of weeks. So, I'm going to be, uh, gentlemen, Zach is here from PFM. So, uh, so the idea here, folks, as you may remember, is we want to review an opportunity to borrow for the purpose of paving our roads, so we're taking a look at, um, what that opportunity may look like, and a couple of different options, and thank you for being here.
Sure. Okay, well, so the idea now, you haven't seen this yet, because it's kind of hot up for the public today. It's, you know, it's similar to what we shared here, I think we were here about four or six weeks ago, and we talked in more general terms about, you know, just borrowing. You know, here, we put together, you know, more of a plan. Now, just like I said last time we were here, you know, we can run many iterations with all these types of things, this is just meant to be an illustration of something that might be helpful, and ultimately, you'll come back and say, here's how we really want it, okay? So, we're not suggesting this is the way to do it, it's just meant to help you think about it. Uh, the only update to the interest rate chart that I have now is, you know, obviously with all the Ukraine, Russia invasion things, the market's more volatile than it's ever been, I mean, it's a real mess, so, we're still, still, you know, fine engines are still being done, we're still, still getting bank bids back through every day, that's all fine, it's still working, uh, but, you know, don't ask me to predict where rates will be in six weeks or anything like that, because it's a pretty interesting market out there. On page two, this is really the same, uh, set of goal points, we need one change under item 1, 3, number one, number three. So, what we put together, and as John kind of just mentioned, was, is there a way to put a, you know, two or three phase plan in, keeping your debt service, so moving your new debt payment at $350,000 going forward, kind of in perpetuity, okay? And borrow money every two or three years in order to have a paving plan that you can kind of keep up with? So, that's, that's kind of, I don't know if I said that clearly, but that's kind of what we tried to design, so if you had $350,000 in your budget to spend on paving, you know, how can you do that over a five or six-year period? So, we'll show you that in a second. And then, uh, the other one I want to mention again, I just like to say this out loud, you know, the rule of thumb is, if you're going to borrow tax exempt money, which is what we'll do, because we get better interest rates, we're expected to spend 85% of that within three years. So, we're going to borrow $3 million today, so far, you know, we can do three or four years from now, you're supposed to kind of borrow the money for the projects you have in mind, okay? Any questions so far? I'm going through some of these things that I don't want to, you know, say anything like I said last time again, worry about. The next page, this is what we call your debt summary, okay? Your debt is mostly on the sue side, which you can see in columns 6 and 7, and we refinanced that two years ago. We do have some general fund debt, so if you borrowed money for paving, that would go under the general fund, budget. Currently in column 4, that's about what you have in your budget for general fund debt service. So, we're running not much, and it's going to drop down significantly, you know, in about, you know, two budget years, okay? So, that's what you have. So, anything that we talk about going forward, you know, your general fund already pays for this, and then it would then pay for something additionally, okay? Any questions about that? Okay, so, so the kind of new pages, this is what you care about, so go to page number 4, it's a colored summary page again, and we'll start from the left to right. This is what we're calling the 10-year option, meaning we'll do three different phases of borrowings, each phase of borrowing will be limited to 10 years. 10 years in borrowing world is a short borrowing, okay? Nothing wrong with that, but it's just kind of a shorter amortization. So, column 5 shows your existing debt in your general funds, we just want to remind you that again, that's what you have now, okay? And then look at columns 1, 6, and 7, so that's what we're calling Phase 1. We assume it was three of this year, that can change to whatever you want it to be. We're going to get to $1.4 million for paving. So, this loan would be for a million for... And then in column 6, it shows what your payments are. And what we did was, we artificially forced the payment in the first two years to be at that $350,000 number. We don't need to do it that way, that's just how we did it for this illustration. You do have latitude for your first one or two payments in the loan, you can kind of make those what you need them to be for your budget, within, you know, within your, basically do have the ability to move those up and down. And then after that, you see the debt falls off to about $120,000 a year, okay? So, that's Phase 1, of this summer. So, you, you take that money, you pave roads over the next two or three summers, and then you come back in June of '25, okay? And that may or may not be the right year, but that's what we have for this, this plan. But borrowing 4 again, 4 for paving. So, in column 8, what happens is, you're going to really add columns 6 and 8 together to get your new debt service budget. So, in column 8, we force those first two payments to add up to $350,000 when you take into account column 6, okay? So, you know, really, column 9 is what, Friday, we'd show you in the budget, and that's, that's adding column 6 and 8 together. And then see if any of the payments kind of drop down again for a little bit, so you have what your new debt actually looked like in column 9. So, everybody follow? So, that $350,000 that we originally kind of targeted is still enough to pay for this going forward, so you don't have to change what's in your budget that you set in 2022 or in the 23 budget, that's kind of, that 350 holds. So, now, fast forward again to Phase 3, two years later, which you're in 4 again, it's another 10-year loan, just a couple of years later, and what happens in column 10 is we size the loan, again, sort of taking into account the other two loans that we did, so that at the end of the day, in column 11, your payments still remain at $350,000, okay? So, in all the debt settles over this, over this about a five-year period, you'll spend, you know, 4.2-ish million for road paving, and that $350,000 that you put in the budget today, or whenever you do that, is enough to continue to fund that plan moving forward. Now, the 350 can be anything you want, it could be 250, it can be 400, you know, but for these purposes, 350 was kind of what we came up with. Obviously, the more money that you have available, the more you can, you know, pave, if you shrink the, the budgeted amount, you'll pave less.
Question, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Is this fixed rate debt?
It wouldn't be.
And each new, each new step of debt, each time we think on more debt, you're assuming the interest rate, I see at the bottom of your illustration, based on current market conditions.
Correct.
But we certainly expect interest rates to go up. How much of an impact do you estimate we might feel from that in terms of our debt service?
We, we, we would change the numbers, and what, what would happen in this scenario? So, say we go walking rates today for Step 1, and then we come back three years from now. Where the rates are, if we want to keep the 350 as the number, as the bounty, you would just borrow less. If, you know, if rates are half a percent higher or a percent higher, instead of giving a million four for the project, you're going to get 975,000, or some, some other number smaller. So, you can still kind of stick with the plan to some extent, you know, or if rates, you know, I mean, people have been saying rates are going up for the past 15 years, and then something happens and they go back down again. So, we don't try to predict rates, um, but, you know, if somehow rates were lower, or the same, or just a little bit higher, you know, then we borrow a different amount of money.
What is your simple interest rate on...
We, we just see a fixed rate, I think, at a 240. And again, that's just a ballpark number, you know, we, we, if we, you know, did something like this, we'd do it like we did in 2020, we'd send an RFP to the 35, you know, banks across PA, we'd get bids back, and then the borough can select, you know, the best bid.
And what about transactional fees on the...
Those are all included in here. So, we have the net numbers.
Okay. And we just need that service, you had made a quick comment that certain columns were totaling as we meant, but I'm assuming you're including column 5 in those aggregates?
So, that's a good question, and we are not including that here, okay? The reason was, is we were talking about kind of the paving in a vacuum, now that may or may not be what you decide to do, but for these purposes, we let column 5 on here to remind you that you do have that debt, but columns 6 through 12 are, are this plan kind of by themselves, okay? And we can, you know, we can change that, so 350 is the number of the funds existing plus new, but we're kind of tasked with it this way, but that's an important, yeah, point.
Appreciate that, and thank you for being here, this is very important.
All right, anything else on this scenario? The, the next page, the scenario, it says different, it reads the same, but it gets a different answer. So, page 5, here, we went with a 20-year borrowing plan, and again, we can do any iteration between 12 years, 15, 17. But for this, the first loan is a 20-year loan. Now, for roads, and, you know, we want to check with your engineer, you can't borrow money that, that has a longer amortization than the useful life of the project, you know, so we see 20 years for roads sometimes, we don't see, we typically go more than that, but we'll just have to, you know, confirm if that works. But for here, we're assuming, column 6, you're going to do a 20-year loan, same thing with forcing the payments to kind of that 350 number to start, and then the subsequent Phase 2 and Phase 3, you know, wrap around that existing first step, so that you wind up in column 11 with a budget of $350,000. Now, this goes out further, the final maturity of this debt runs out to 2042, whereas on the last page, we stopped at 2037, because there were shorter loans. Here, what you did is $5.3 million, kind of at these assumed rates for paving. So, all this does is it gives you a longer amortization, you know, more debt, more, more project money.
Again, a 2.4?
No, these would be different. So, if we did them, it's unlikely that we would get a fixed rate for the life, okay? So, the way that works in the lending world is, you know, you have a fixed rate for 10 years, or seven years, or whatever the banks offer, and then after that, we assume a maximum cap rate. So, these numbers would assume that cap rate, now, it may be set lower than that, but we know it'll never go higher than that. I believe for these purposes, the cap rate is maybe a four and a quarter, um, you know, and that changes based on the market, a couple of years from now, the going cap rate might be 5% or, as recently, it's, you know, a couple of weeks ago, it was 350, but since rates kind of are moving higher, that's, that's where we are.
Start rate 2.4?
Yes, and so, yeah.
Correct.
Again, I wouldn't get too fixated on what rates we're assuming, it's, you know, we'll give you the best rate in the market whenever you go do this, but again, we kind of make, you know, assumptions for those three questions. Um, so that's a good point, that's one difference here, you know, depending on how this plan, you know, works and what you decide you really want to do, you know, the size of the borrowings and the length of the borrowings will also determine whether a bank loan is or is not the right answer, okay? Once you start to get, you know, past 15 years, a bond issue will offer you fixed rates. Now, we don't typically want to do a bond issue if it's a million-dollar borrowing, but if this was to kind of creep into the, you know, higher loans, 2s, 3s, we're going to want to compare a bond issue to a bank loan and decide what's really the right answer. Bond issues have typically more upfront costs, but they get you fixed rates and oftentimes lower fixed rates for the life, so, at the end of the day, if the net right answer is a bond issue saves you, you know, $150,000 over the life, regardless of the upfront costs, you know, you may want to go that route. It's not always the right answer, but we'll just have to...
Does a bond issue have the same restrictions on use of funds within three years?
Yes.
And would you suggest a whole lot of, of serious advantage then, if a bond issue was what?
Well, good question. So, in this example, the 20-year option to start, maybe that's a bond issue. Three years later, the market conditions are totally different, and it's a shorter loan, that banks are lending out, you know, with good rates out that far, and then maybe we switch to a bank loan, uh, you know, or it could work the other way, we could do a bank loan first and a bond issue second. We, you know, we don't care what the answer is, as long as it's the right answer, you know, the cheapest cost of funds.
At the time.
Yeah, at the time.
And the numbers that you're laying across the top are very, will change those based on our ability to actually pave roads at the time that we're borrowing loans.
What's that?
If we don't have capacity for more than 1.2 million dollars of work, we certainly will borrow 1.7.
Exactly.
Just move the money around the way we need to. And as far as flexibility on the payment schedule, we had asked the first year or two, you said there was some flexibility there. We certainly can increase our payments to debt service. Is there penalty for accelerating repayment?
So, you're talking about if, you know, you want to pay more on the loan...
Well, in terms of the councilman, sorry, Mr. Anthony, in terms of, and those are the examples, which would lead for, well, a particular borrowing period. Uh, we would have presumably excess dollars to put toward debt service, because we hadn't taken on an additional due debt. So, would there be vision managed during accelerating the debt repayment?
So, the way that works is, again, it's not a simple answer, these numbers. So, with the bank loan, when we did that out, we'll ask for it to be prepayable at any time without penalty, most banks will comply with that, some, some might not. Um, so, if you want to make, you know, an overage payment, you have $500,000, and you want to pay, and you may have to pay 350, you can use that money to pay off the balance of the loan, at, at any time, typically. If you do a bond issue, it's not the same answer. A bond issue has a five-year call feature, which means the investors are guaranteed the money that they, you know, that they purchase for the first five years, so then after that five-year period, you can refinance your debt or pay it off or restructure, but you have to wait the first five years. So, in that scenario, if you have a bond, you know, what you would do is, you know, take that money and score it away in an account, you know, debt service account or something, so that five years from now, you can then take the million dollars and pay off the, you know, some of the bond issue early. I think that's, that answered your question.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Any other thoughts or questions?
The reason I put this in front of council is, I'd like to move if PFM do the work for us, to put together a couple of options for us. Uh, as you heard, money's getting more expensive, we borrowed 1.6 last time when we refinanced, for now, 2.4, it's probably going to get higher, he can't say that, but we can, if it will, and we'd like to make sure that we can get on roads paid as quickly as we possibly can. Mr. Rovalski has said that he has projects for us in the last 20 years, that he would be able to use approximately this much money. So, I'd like to get a general head nod, there's no commitment at this moment, but a general head nod to move forward with some kind of a plan coming from PFM, which would be engaging in our body council as well.
Right.
Questions, concerns?
I have a question, and, so, I know this is a, a good option, are we exploring the Penda option to, for, what, their program for redways? Sorry, um, just to, to compare, because I don't know what that program is.
Roger's talking about, I believe, the Penda interest, interest structure band, the credit bank, they would have time, 10-year term fixed rate, and right now, their current interest rate is 1.65% for a 10-year loan. Could be no, there are significant transactional costs, or those net numbers. Those are...
Any other thoughts or questions?
The reason I put this in front of council is I'd like to move if you have them do the work for us to put together a couple of options for us. As you've heard, money's getting more expensive. We borrowed 1.6 last time when we refinanced. For now, 2.4. It's probably going to get higher. He can't say that, but we can, if we will. And we'd like to make sure that we can get on roads paid as quickly as we possibly can. Mr. Rogowski has said that he has projects for us in the last 20 years that he would be able to use approximately this much money. So I'd like to get a general head nod. There's no commitment at this moment, but a general head nod to move forward with some kind of a plan coming from the bill, which would be engaging in our body council as well.
Right.
Questions, concerns?
I have a question. So I know this is a good option. Are we exploring the Penda option to, for their program for roadways? Sorry, just to compare, because I don't know what that program is.
Roger's talking about, I believe, the Penda infrastructure band, the credit bank. They would have prime, 10-year term fixed rate. And right now, their current interest rate is 1.65% for a 10-year loan.
Could be helped there with significant transactional costs or those net numbers.
Those are, that's, this is all for Penda. This is Penda, look at everything, they go through everything. This is not something, you guys have access to this.
It's not Penda's.
No, this is Penda's infrastructure bank.
No, we don't.
Some of the big projects, Washington Township, Franklin County, Bridge Place in front of it, Downington Bay, Chester County for paving, a lot of airports, 17, 18 million dollar projects that they're pulling off. Now, they're, the bigger places, they're paying back a lot quicker than what we are. They are, Penda gives a half prime, this is a half prime. Whatever the prime is, it's Penda, the interest rates have on Penda infrastructure bank.
So I don't want to hold it up. I just think that we should afford that scale, cut it to that, yeah. Then that way we can move it, because I agree. Roadside pays.
Well, two months ago, we were getting bank loan courts in the low 1%. But it's changed now. And with the Fed reading today and tomorrow, the increased rates. You just have to see. All right.
Yeah, so that half prime, a quarter, how can they look at that?
Well, yeah, they're saying a quarter, maybe half a percent. I think it's back to a quarter.
Back to a quarter.
Consensus is. Other questions?
No, sorry. Bernard Manager Rogowski. So I think you brought to our attention that the citizenry can only absorb so much in terms of infrastructure investment within a given period of time. And we understand that to be, of course, curbs and sidewalks principally. Is the amount that we're discussing here, do we believe that that is a reasonable amount for citizens to absorb in these time frames? So not the debt.
It was, yeah.
But he said, you have, you're going to have citizens who are going to have to invest in their sidewalks and their curbing.
I'm not sure there was the number of citizens necessarily that could handle it. It was the amount of work that could be done through the course of the year.
That was another thing that we mentioned. And I also mentioned the ability to get the materials.
Right.
So it's not really a question for our gentry.
No, we have Engineer Rogowski doing that work for us to get that information for us simultaneously while we're working on the works. We don't make a decision on borrowing money until we know what it's going to do to handle what we can handle.
And I guess like the other thing is, is how much does 1.4 million actually pay?
That depends on what's going to be done.
Yeah, I think.
He even mentioned that he needs a million dollars right off the top just to be paid for. So I don't know what that means. I look forward to learning all about that as we're getting information on how to pay for it. Are we thought our dollars able to do the sewer? Are we looking at different funding for that, different funding?
Right. Because it pays for by a different fund.
Yeah, it depends on how you're going to pay this, what you're going to use to pay this back. You're going to use liquid fuels to pay this back, it's paving period, and it has to be Penda's back. You have to have the project approved, and then you have to have payments approved. So there's two sets of approvals that have to go through this. The infrastructure work as far as sewer and stormwater, that would be separate funds outside of, there are only very specific reasons why you can use liquid fuel funds to repair sewers or stormwater. So that's on top of the base.
And from it, how much approximately do we get in terms of skills? I'm trying to remember.
Right now, we're around 250,000 a year, which is a decreasing number. And I don't think going down.
Sorry, let me turn it off to that question. If you did have other projects that you want to do, maybe we don't have to do it all at once. Now, even if it's sewer or stormwater or whatever it is, you can still do one loan. Okay? Because the investors don't necessarily, it's not that much different. The borrower is still borrowing your money. So it's the general obligation of the borrower that's the backing. And then what we do is we break out the schedules at times. So Roger can say, okay, this is allocated to the sewer fund and this is allocated for the general fund. The reason I say that is if we go borrow 2 million dollars for paving and then six, two months later, you say we also need to, you want to do it together because it's efficiencies of costs and just everything like that.
Yeah, that's good.
But you can't do one loan. We can broken into funds, is how that would work.
Other questions for me?
Yeah, I just a point, I think to clarify the discussion a minute ago, what the residents can absorb. I think what Engineer Rogowski was speaking to was when we do a paving plan, that triggers our curbs and sidewalks, all right? So that's when the code enforcement officer goes out, notifies the residents that their curb and sidewalks extremely deficient, and now it's time to bring it up to code. Those numbers from doing them in the past to the residents prior to COVID, prior to all the other stuff, they were rather significant because we bid them at, when we bid them, we had to bid them at prevailing wage, all right? But we've done something to give them an option that they can run and get their own prices as long as it's based on the same quantities. So that's, I think, what Engineer Rogowski was referring to. Right now, 1.7, 1.7 million dollars, it seems like a lot, it is a lot of money to everyone else. The paving you're going to get out of that, I will, I hate to keep throwing up. Allen Del Road was 860,000 dollars was the estimated cost for Allen Del Road. That's it. That did include any infrastructure work and it only included some remediation. So 1.7 million dollars is a lot of money. I don't know what kind of bank for your buck you're going to get for it.
That brings a thought into my head. When my curves at prevailing rates were done. Thank you for that, because they were expensive. But are we offering anything to folks to be able to have assistance with that or a payment plan?
We do a payment, we do a 90-day test cash. Usually that's the standard thing that we do with those. Is it the Penda road or Penda, like the Marble Market? A few of those streets that we did, Shepherdstown, York Street. Penda did the crosswalks. So if it were the crosswalk, it crossed there right away. They did the ADA crosswalk, so it saves a good few residents a good bit. The UGI is going to call Allen Del Road. They're going to put any ADA crosswalks for some of those people that are, that are in effect. The other people, when we do the top code, are going to have to put those in themselves.
And so folks cannot repair their sidewalks until the paving is complete?
Oh, they can do it.
They can do it?
We encourage them to do it before.
Okay, I was going to say, so maybe I was thinking that there should be a concurrent education plan for people that would have sidewalks that need to be done or wherever we start, we're going to pay it.
I think, I think the, I would get a little more cautious and let Engineer Rogowski get a little more deeper into capital approval plan. Because I think you're going to go and ask for 1.7 million dollars. They're going to want to know what you're going to do with that money. They're going to want a plan, an approved plan that council behind them. Zach, if I'm wrong, they're not going to hand you a check for 1.7 million dollars and say, whatever you want to do with it.
Yeah, the bond council will have to opine that they believe these are kind of real viable projects. So we kind of, we do have real things here.
Do we even estimate when the engineer will have a plan to us?
It was a goal for the end, by the end of the year. But I know he's got some things working on and stuff like that, so we don't have to expedite.
Do we have any wild ass list on what are the costs it takes to all the roads at the same time?
About 75 million dollars.
So I feel this is good perspective in terms of each 1.7 million dollar loan would bring us up to about five or four times?
We were at the forum last meeting when he said made up over 60 million. If you, now, I included infrastructure in that councilment, so 75 million, yeah, if somebody gets a lottery for a nice number, you know, we can name the street after it.
Do you have other thoughts? Will we get out of your ballpark? I think this is a great presentation. I appreciate your input.
Yeah, thank you. So are there way winners? Do you need us to sign some?
I'll circle back with you after I've finished.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Zach, can you send this over electronic for a minute?
Yeah.
Next item. Action to about ordinance 1175, modifying chapter 15, part two, section 15 dash 206. For the stop signs, road tolling, looped.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Booker makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anthony seconds. Any discussion?
This was an update we had to do regardless. That is correct. It's just a clear, some preliminary language in the, preliminary language of this section of the ordinance.
Any other questions? Say one.
Councilor Magidens?
Yes.
Councilman Anthony?
Yes.
Councilman Booker?
Yes.
Councilman Gary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moot?
Yes.
President Miller?
Yes.
Councilman O'Neil?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, action to further ordinance 1176, amending chapter 27, part seven, section 27 dash 750. Conditions placed on the additional use of the tattoo parlor to the planning permission for review.
Is there a motion? Does Agarson make the motion? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Mr. Burke seconds. Any discussion? Column two? All opposed? Motion passes and reported after plan.
That will be on their agenda for the 28th, at six o'clock in this room. Six thirty, sorry.
Just a clarification, was anything, or rarely that we're placing a sign on?
The signs were ordered. The signs came in late this week, or late last week. We have to do a one call with those children at play sign, is what we got. That we want to place at the property line on Norway Street coming out of the development between the last house on Norway and the house on the corner of Sharon. There'll be a sign placed there. At the next block between Sharon and Coughlin, there will be a sign facing both ways at the middle of the block. So they're backed far enough that if we ever have to do put stop signs in, we don't have to move these signs and they won't cause any sight distance issues on the driveway.
Have we reached out to the resident who brought the petition in to let them know what's happening?
Uh, no, here's me.
No. It's okay.
So we could have put in stop signs to this.
Yeah, I heard that last. The end of last, yeah.
In an effort to slow down traffic, to make it a little bit better, we're putting in children's play signs to get the traffic slowed down while we're waiting for the capacity to do more.
And they heard there was, you have these underground wires and everything out there. There was phone boxes and everything else coming around. This is going to be, it's tricky to put these in there. So the one call is going to have to be very close to where the things are. So we'll get them put up, see how they come in. It was about 350 dollars a sign and pole. So and the poles are going up, plus the freight now. They're putting fuel costs and everything, so the price was a little higher. We had four, I bought, we bought four. We're going to install three and then we'll have a spare if we need it.
Can you hear on the news for community outreach, Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you. Action to approve the contract and execute with revised LLC from the borough website. Redesigning the amount of 10,350 dollars. And which also contingent on the sources, social capacities, etc.
Mr. Anthony, the?
I'll start then.
The numbers and targets. Any discussion?
My only question was, we're paying them the entire amount upfront for the contract. Does it not typically have a bite?
Yeah, I think that's going to be part of the review of the sources, the effects for the whole.
It's not typical, based on my experience, we're going to be milestone payments based upon progress towards deliverables under the contract. So it's something that I recommend that we talk to them about in terms of whether it's 25% payments along the way and if we can be funded 25% upfront to get them started, but final payment delayed till the very end.
Sure. We'd be unveiling of the website or something like that. We can have that discussion, I mean, committee can. I should also have a discussion, I think, once we get going forward with it.
So it'll be contingent on the sources?
Yeah.
Okay, exactly.
When we look, the forms component might be added, or is that not in the thought at the moment?
So the forms are something that we will look at for the future. We're going to get this baseline in, the essentials in. We don't have any timeline for that yet, but we continue to work beyond this being approved up to being approved.
I'm sure, I'm sure you've got the design too, but that can be added in any time.
Yes, these are add-ons.
Yes. I'm sorry, one other question. There's no financial decision set of to add them later versus getting them upfront?
Not for, uh, not for.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
I agree.
All opposed? Community and economic development, Mr. Burke.
Thank you. So we have action to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 26 to 28 West Main Street. Alaro L. Shee provided down repair, replacement windows roof and roof metalwork incoming.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Agarson makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second. This plan's not a part of our, been hard approved yet.
Any other discussion, any questions on the application?
They're building for, you'll notice that railroad avenue has been cooled down because of this, because of the lifting big material up. They've got a couple lifts in there, there's a dumpster in there. They've started tearing the roof off, so they're going to get that replaced and get weather in. So if you happen to be going downtown, maybe going the other side of the street of Main Street. So it's in progress.
All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Motion passes. I'll put words in safety, Mr. Booker.
All right, so we had one item here today. It's on, seeking a motion to have action on a possible transfer of janitorial sewer assets to the municipal authority.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So I motion that the borough retain the ownership and operation of the control of sanitary sewer system and authorize the authorities to prepare the necessary documents. I do believe that was option one, if you were given.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I said it.
Mr. Burke seconds. Any discussion?
Question? I was going to say, I feel like that's the option where it seems to be more in line with what we're currently doing. I know previously we said we wanted to sort of kind of, but I'm not really able to make this progress.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. I look forward to working with and hearing more from those who are on the authority. I think they have a great field of knowledge and were very informative when they were here. I think it was good because they're frightened.
Okay, so no more discussion. All in favor of the motion?
Aye, aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. You're going on the property parks and recreation, Mr. Burke.
Okay, so first on the list is action to authorize the borough recreation board to hold the annual Easter egg hunt in Memorial Park, Saturday, April 2nd. The rain date of Saturday, April 9th. It would be at 11:00 a.m. At a cost not to exceed $1,000,000, and that is for all the candy prizes and whatever we have to give out that day.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the authority?
Salute.
Mr. Anthony, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. O'Neill, second. Any discussion? Questions?
The $1,000 is something that's already allocated for them, isn't that correct?
It is. It is no fun for, uh, expense.
From what I understood, we have that available.
It is available, but it's not, it's not, it's not allocated specifically to that. They can use it out of their, their, uh, gotcha, okay.
Who was, who was the staffing of the, of the event?
Uh, the rec ward is doing it.
Good.
All volunteers. There doesn't have to be any, um, business involvement or, um, borough employee involved in that.
Depends on how good the agents are. Besides this.
And those two all participate, am I correct?
How is it that being advertised this month?
Um, I would imagine on the website.
So, um, Councilman Gary, the egg hunt will advertise itself.
You guys just talk about it longer than it'll take to have this, if that's.
Literally over at eleven oh five.
Uh, that's, uh, you and your.
Two, eleven oh two.
Did we all attend it?
Yes.
Have they participated?
Insanely attentive, I mean, we haven't had them in two years, though.
I can be looking for a bunny volunteer.
Just, just be a little bunny.
Dude, you want, uh, you wanna speak to T. D. about the fire company getting involved?
Oh, um, yes, who was gonna, um, I think Beach Mech is gonna reach out to the fire company and see if they want to volunteer anytime, or help out in any way.
Okay.
Certainly on a volunteer basis, you know.
And candy breads.
Right, maybe get it here. Beach Mech, I believe, her name, yeah.
The chairman of the recreation force?
Yes.
That's a well-known reputation.
Okay, um, discussion, oh.
We have a motion and a second.
Oh, we need to get that for him.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, um, discussion and action on the pool management agreement for twenty twenty-two. Any questions or comments about the pool agreement with the, uh, what is?
So I just, um, clarify, I think that I have the answer, that the pool will be open from twelve to eight, seven to eight this year?
Yes.
Before there are any additional questions, do we have a motion for the approval for any, any?
I'll make a motion.
Does Agarson raise a motion, uh, to approve the pool management agreement for twenty twenty-two? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. O'Neill, second. Discussion.
The other question that I clarify is that the, um, school district will interview, continue to interview the lifeguards and not be a borough responsibility.
Correct, um, I, we had discussed at the, um, rec ward that they would have a list, give up a list to approve, once they have candidates, so how is, that's how it's supposed to work, yeah.
That's, that's how it should work.
So do we know when they'll get us that?
Who they can find anybody to hire.
Do they have, you know, if they've had any returning lifeguard?
One.
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 Oh, it's two now?
Yeah.
And two, and two applications so far.
And they were gonna have a, um, like a, a lifeguard re certification intensive, um, this weekend, but I think they had to cancel it, I don't, not sure why.
No, ten days.
Uh, they had some, maybe they backed out. So, um, so, so for pool staff and for regular rec staff for the summer camps, if you know anybody who wants to be a lifeguard or work for the rec ward in the summer camp, summer adventure camp, um, they have to be sixteen plus, uh, please move to the, to the, to park and rec.
The background of the rec ward?
Pardon? Yes. And who, who, the borough requires, yes, borough requires that of all employees. Who sums that, the person, a person applying? Now, in, in the past, if they've served the entire year as a, as a pool, because they are expensive and they're not making a whole lot of money, we've refunded them that, the cost, so that was kind of a perk, um, yeah, for them to serve the entire year.
I think as of our meeting, um, uh, Tanya Brown said that there, she had twenty staff members, and she needs forty-five, and that's just for the playground and the adventure camp, that's not for a pool.
Question on the pool management agreement and the concession stand, does this give us the ability to do what we want with the concession stand in the future, that, you know, we can, we can look at other options?
Yeah, it's okay, the concession stand is ours.
Okay.
As far, I mean, and I, I think that once we get down that road, we start elaborating on that a little bit more, I think that, um, we can actually pull this component maybe out of the agreement, um, so, and, and let the, and let the school district run the front desk and the, uh, the lifeguard.
Who's gonna be responsible for overseeing the operation of the pool day-to-day for the, uh, employees? I guess I'm a little confused, I read through this, like.
The management of the.
The pool manager?
The pool manager.
The pool manager is a school?
She was a school employee.
And she'll be responsible for overseeing concessions, lifeguards?
Yep.
Okay. Front office?
Yep. Her or the assistant manager, so the one or the other will be there.
And she'll be managing the borough employees.
So, yeah, yeah, so the lifeguard got considered borough employees, yeah. I wasn't sure if they were borough employees or district employees.
No, they're all borough, everybody's borough employees.
That happens in the case, correct?
For the last fifteen or twenty years, yeah.
Okay.
And managers, as you said, uh, except the manager and the assistant manager, which were borough district employees.
Right. And I would say that they are in consultation with me quite a bit, so it's not, it's not being run in a bank account, there's, they're, they're in consultation with me about, um, the operations of the pool and then any kind of maintenance stuff, they're in discussions with CH or the highway department, so, um, and they're, all the deposits and stuff are brought through us, so we, we know when the stuff is going in the bank, how much is going in the bank, and, and all that stuff.
So, so that's going directly to you rather than going through the rec ward?
Correct. The rec, there'd be a, the rec ward is a recommending body to counsel, it's not, and it does not go up one, it doesn't go to the school district, it comes directly to you.
As far as the management of the pool, um, has, has there ever been discussion in the past where we would take care of the hiring of that position in, like, management? Cause I feel like we have all these employees there and we're, we're hiring, we're in an agreement with the school, and did the school district employees oversee borough employees, I don't know, I just, what, like, has there ever been discussion too where we just kinda bring that person in-house? I'm not sure I understand what the value is.
So if, if you, if the student employees are paying part of her salary, am I correct? And so she's a full-time, she works year-round to the school district, if we hired, we would then be responsible?
So it's, that this person's position is, is in the larger scope of the joint recreation agreement?
Correct.
And they're funded through that operation as well as this?
Gotcha.
The key benefit and that sort of thing, so.
Okay.
That's complicated.
It, it seems.
But it hasn't been working out well as far as your management of the district's employees.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's issues that come up and we address them and we get them taken care of, um, I mean, honestly, in two thousand and eighteen, pre-COVID, the pool actually made some money, and if we can ever get back to that, that situation, um, you know, with, working with the school district, working with the concession stand, you know, and adjusting things through the year as we were going through, it worked out well, I mean, we, we banked probably about forty-five thousand dollars a year, which is, is unheard of for the swimming pool, so, um, and, and, yes, Councilman Booker, we did have a pool manager at one time, um, and that's why this agreement is, it's like, gotcha.
So I, I noticed here since we're talking about all of this, the marketing is the responsibility of the borough. Is, is that tasked to someone within the borough office?
Multiple people.
And the school district doesn't, like, go share?
School district does, and they help out.
Yeah, they do, they do, they're on their, on their Facebook page and on the website and.
Sure, so I see under marketing that the district shall assist, uh, in some, you know, support services, but I guess, now that we're talking about the profitability, profit or loss of the operation, we really should look at that and say, well, advertising, marketing, and promotion is a significant part of that, if we wanna draw more membership in, and have this be an improvement, uh, a break-even operation.
So in my experience with school districts, um, email lists in contact, they have the resources to do that, um, in fact, anytime we have an event, if you ask them to advertise, their reach is far greater than I think that we would be able to do unless we are investing in a strategic business marketing plan, um, I, I believe the school district does a pretty good job of putting out their Facebook and sending out an email to remind folks, and we can definitely, Laura, I mean, you talked to Tanya about her emails.
Have I talked to her about her emails?
Yeah, so it might be something that I agree that if we're going to have more people this season, that it might be nice to remind them to send out that email and get early.
Oh, can you, which, which email are you talking about?
Just the email to remind people to percutiate our pool.
Oh, 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 I see, cause she'll just pick it, I see what you're saying.
It does us good to have early season holders that we can predict the budget.
Well, that's been going.
It's been going really well.
Really well.
So.
That's good.
I mean, with the, with the doubt about the, the slides and a few other things, always been going really well, so.
Do you, I think, I'm gonna make a call, I'm sorry.
I'll get back to you, I'm, I can't tell you right now, I'll pop my head.
Just add one for advertising, definitely.
I'd be, I'm very much in favor of the pool personally, I think that I'll be very interested to see what the final numbers are at the end of the season, to see whether or not it's profit or loss on that particular program, because if we can't get enough community support to break even, maybe it's not valuable enough to community, um, I might not believe that to be true, but I'll be ready to see the final financial figures at the end of the season.
It seems like the restrictions have lifted, you know, cause even last year we saw the numbers picking up, and also Weta pays a huge deal in it, you know, frame day, this is that, but the, the true profit of the pool will always be season passes, so we really do need to get that out.
We have it, we have had it on, we've had it on Facebook, we've had it on our website.
Oh, yeah, I don't have it.
It's been out, I mean, you know, people come in here and they ask about it, so, I mean, and Tanya, Tanya and her group has been putting it out there, so.
And concessions are just a blip in it, like, it, the season passes, that really generate the most revenue.
Yeah, but concessions is where you make or break, the, the profit or loss of the whole, and I'm gonna work with Sue again this year, very diligently on pricing and, and, and stock and stuff like that, so.
And the other option is pool parties and rentals and that sort of thing, which I think in the last year, we just really didn't have that going on just because of what had occurred.
Oh, it's the staffing, it's, it's the staffing, when the, the kids that work all day in the sun, they don't wanna stick around for another two and a half hours for people at the pool party, so it, it makes it very difficult to, to do that, so, and some of these kids are on workers permits, so they, they can't work, they don't do that any hours.
I will say, though, I was a little disappointed to see that we're not offering it for free on community day.
Nah, it becomes a safety issue. Um, this pool gets overcrowded, and we're short lifeguards already, um, and, you know, we have people that are just, maybe they don't, um, even know how to swim, but it's free, so I'm going in, and, um, so, Tanya especially, um, and, and, and some of the other members of the, of the rec ward, it's, it's too much of a safety issue.
I wish I could have checked it out, I think, I'd like to parse that out a little bit, if you were. Well, we have a motion and a second for the action of the pool agreement. Any further discussion? Say one, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Um, update on the renovation of the slide.
Kind of, this under my manager's, real, real quick, um, today is the last day for questions and clarifications, uh, I didn't get any yet, um, and the bid is due, bids are due next on the twenty-eighth, so they'll be ready for the council meeting and the first council meeting in, um, April for approval, if there's any contest. There were twenty-nine that have downloaded the bid package, so I hope when we get a few of them back. The four that I contacted outside of procure bid, uh, I sent them a link to procure bid, um, and they've signed up, I don't know if they're gonna bid or not to procure bid, so that's kinda where we're at with those, I'll let you know next week.
Is twenty-nine a good response?
Twenty-nine is a pretty decent response, some of them are trade magazines, so, um, but there were twenty-nine people that downloaded the, the bid, uh, when we did the sweeper contract, there were four, so, yes, so twenty-nine's not a bad number.
Thank you.
Okay, um, discussion on the request of the rec ward for allocation of general expense funds for a feasibility study, um, of the pool facility operations, repairs, and improvements. So, um, that was, they were thinking, uh, forty thousand dollars, yeah.
I, there was a, this was, remember the grant?
The DCNR grant.
The DCNR grant that you sent around, President Miller, um, this, one of the requirements for any kind of improvement for the rest of the pool, to get DCNR money, we have to have a feasibility done, studied up first, the feasibility study that we have for the pool is outdated, and DCNR will not accept it, so, they, because we've also made changes to the pool, we've done improvements, we've done equipment upgrades, uh, so the feas, current feasibility study is outdated, what they asked for was part of the general expense funds, which, um, you know, that's ARP funds, um, to be allocated to them in the amount of forty thousand dollars, that was, that was the general numbers that we received from people around us that have done feasibility studies, Hannah and Talia did one last year, they were forty-two thousand, I think is what their feasibility study was, was what cost them.
So, I mean, from a procedural standpoint, I'd be hesitant to allocate money for something we don't have a firm cost on, but I think we could do, and this is enough for action tonight, but, but what I think we could do is, is give them, or give you to go ahead to, uh, prepare a RFP, but in order to get the proposals, still show us how much it's going to cost for feasibility, so.
And then allocate.
Yeah.
Correct, all right, that makes sense.
Because with the forty thousand, you know, sort of a guest in them.
It, it was, yeah.
But, um, but we don't know whether, because our pools are different size and have different needs, whether or not the RFP will be, be, be different in terms of the scope of what the feasibility study is, so, I mean, it could be lesser, it could be more.
Correct. I'm, I'm sure, I can, we can do that, I can work with, Tanya is the one that did the last RFP for the feasibility study, I have copies of the last feasibility study in my office, um, and we can, I can draw a strap, something else and get it out.
So I think, we could have that for the next, you know, we could have it for the next meeting.
We're, we're in the pool season, I'll, I'll get it as soon as I can, uh, we're not gonna get a feasibility study this year, it won't be this year, it's gonna have to be, probably come fall and they'll look over the books and see operations and ma, maintenance and stuff like that, um, so.
We want to see, like, the operation of this year.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do what we can to try to get it before the end of the season, but, um, usually by the end of the season, it's most efficient at the pool too, so, as far as the, how they work with things and, and stuff like that.
I'm not sure how it works, but maybe they wanna see, you know, pre-engage them, maybe they wanna see, uh, the operation of the pool throughout, throughout the year.
Yeah, it's a, it's a time crunch right now, we're trying to get all that stuff squared away before we, we're ready to open the pool.
Anyone else have any comments on it?
I, I think, the world's, Tanya, I think she'd be to do the RFP if she's done it in the past, and she knows what she's doing, I, I like the idea of the study looking at the performance of this year to inform council better for budgetary purposes for next year.
Certainly, the world's getting grants would be too. Anyone, anything? Anyone, anything to do with, anything on?
Alright, and then moving on to the discussion, um, of the request of the South Mountain Charlie Greenway request and obligation.
I, I would just like to comment on the, this whole project in general. I think, um, from, uh, the perspective of being elected officials, I feel like there aren't a lot of opportunities where you get to, what, are you either that we're not, like, the people that are doing it? And I think being able to touch, leave a touch on the community is like this everlasting, is something that's really cool. Um, that piece of that is, I know, getting, uh, that right-of-way taken care of is something we have to foot the bill for eventually anyway. So, I think, um, being able to provide some financial support for that, I feel like is, we'd be getting this land on the discount.
And have we confirmed with the county that they also will be starting money to help secure the land?
No, it's not. The option was, uh, that, that, that was the seventeen-five is the matching grant money for the money from DCR. That's not, we will be footing the bill for buying the land.
That's, it's like...
The land that we've been using for the last four years.
But we were going it outright and then, but did the, I, I thought that he said that the county would be contributing to the purchase of the land. There was that we all off on our...
That's all.
The only thing that was an appraisal value, then there's a breakdown of three separate entities, DCR, the match, Cumberland County, Silver Spring Township.
It's all the strength that they would contribute.
So, they, what they were saying was they only need about six thousand for us to be able to do that.
That's, that's correct. So, there was a conference call that we had a few weeks ago where there were participants from, um, representing the county, Silver Spring Township and the Canxburg Borough, um, and there was discussion regarding the acquisition of, of the right-of-way. And Silver Spring Township, I think, is the one that, that suggested that it split it up, that the, the cost, acquisition cost three ways, with the county participating, um, six thousand dollars, Silver Spring, six thousand, and Canxburg, six thousand. That's, that's not as far as those discussions went, and that's just assuming that the acquisition cost would be eighteen thousand dollars. So, there are a lot of assumptions in there, um, and there's no, nothing has been formalized in terms of, of commitments on behalf of the county or Silver Spring Township to actually contribute money towards that acquisition cost, just to be clear. But, if, if council's in favor of moving forward with this, um, and, and seeing if we can actually acquire it right-of-way, um, we can do that. And, and the first step is, of course, going to be contacting Norfolk Southern to see what, um, level of interest they might have, and to go through the process of trying to negotiate a deal, and whatever that might mean. And it, it could be a sweetheart deal at a thousand dollars, or they may demand a hundred thousand dollars. I, I don't know until we have that conversation. But, until we have a number on the table, I think that's when we, that will be a decision point, or at least the next decision point for council in terms of, of moving forward.
One thing also concerns that Monroe Township had to be part of the approval, and they were not in favor at this time of the overall project.
Well, so, yes, you're, you're correct. Monroe Township is not, um, is not a participant in this phase of the project. Um, so, the project can move forward as it, as the trail works its way through the borough. Um, but you're correct, the next phase of this trail system would involve Monroe Township. And at least, um, currently, uh, the township has indicated that it's not interested in moving forward with the project. I, I will say that when it comes to initiatives like this, um, in setting up a greenway like this, it really requires a lot of vision and, and, and forward planning. So, there could be a change of heart on the part of Monroe Township. There could be a change in leadership and elected leaders. Um, so, if, if nothing else, there is grant money available, um, that where, at least, at least up to this point, the borough has not spent its own money on the project. Um, and if, if nothing else, this will set the stage for potential future development in the Monroe Township and the South Mountain to complete the project.
This project was never meant to happen next year. It's like a ten-year vision. And I like the council and group that invest in our green spaces and outdoor recreation. With the combination that we did enter into this agreement to say that the borough would not be absorbing costs, um, I think that going forward and seeing if we can acquire, take us to the next step on this, but to fill this project out, I think we would be short sighted. And central Pennsylvania, I think we are very far behind in our outdoor recreation, in all recreation programs. And I like the idea of having a footpath that connects communities, even if Monroe isn't on board right now, but I do believe that we talk about the basis of change, you know, the...
I think you mentioned Silver Spring has changed apart.
Yeah, so that's, that's, I, and I, I think that, you're correct, I mean, Silver Spring was always on board. Um, but I, I know that in town council, there's been some change of hearts. I just think that as long as we're not putting out the funds from us, I think at this point, I'd, I'd like to see where we can go with it, with the, with understanding that we're not going to be putting out money.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, that taking care of the ownership of that right-of-way, which would be the, the financial obligations that, um, the, uh, South Mountain Charlie Greenway is requesting, right? Um, if there is some way that we could split that cost, that would be a cost we'd have to figure out anyway, in theory, right?
That is correct. So, so, the, the acquisition of right-of-way starts with a purpose. There's an issue of, of the existing right-of-way and, and the borough's cemetery sewer system encroaching upon that, that right-of-way space that needs to be addressed somehow. So, the borough does have a vested interest in trying to, um, to, to, to address, reconcile this, this issue with respect to the encroaching. So, it's something we want to take care of.
So, organization on the encroaching upon.
Well, that's what I was going to say, is it's an abandoned railroad right-of-way that goes back to, I wouldn't say, uh, even Cumberland County Railroad or some nineteenth-century rail system that was in place, um, that eventually worked its way through mergers and acquisitions to Norfolk Southern, um, which basically acquired all of the railroad right-aways for the most part, in, at least this part, definitely. So, it's them that were encroaching upon, technically.
Technically, probably, yeah. And, and I, and I'm, I'm hesitating, I mean, it's only because it's not clear, but our best guess is that it is railroad right-of-way. We can't find it, that the land is tied to any adjacent property owner. And so, by default, um, the assumption is that it's railroad right-of-way that Norfolk Southern owns. It's quite possible that Norfolk Southern doesn't know that it owns the land.
And who's going to maintain that land now?
The borough is. And so, we wouldn't have any increase in cost of making to the land. And it's slightly over four acres that's in the borough. There's a smidgen that's in an adjoining municipality.
Correct, I think it's Monroe, it, it's an extension to Monroe, just a touch. And...
No, Silver Spring.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
And the, the credit estimate was thirty-five-five, give or take. And that appraisal was secured by who? That I do not know. Okay.
That appraisal was secured by the South Mountain Charlie Greenway group, uh, through their appraisal.
Okay, so...
And I have, I have yet to see, I, they've not sent that appraisal over to us. Did they send it to you, Mike?
No.
So, um, is there a market in Norfolk State? So, that little sliver of, of land that exists in Monroe, if, if we acquired that land, would the borough own that land in Monroe Township?
Well, it, it, Manager Soski said it's Silver Spring, but Silver Spring, I'm...
We, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be acquiring that outside of the answer borough.
And no one's first aware, in your experience, which I know is broad, is the railroad ever open, or, you know, the instances where they're open to, um, as I think you suggested earlier, giving us, uh, a lesser-than-market value price on something like this?
So, I, I have negotiated a number of deals with the Norfolk Southern with respect to the acquisition of, of real estate. And their, their official line is, is that they expect to receive fair market value for the land.
Sure.
Now, I, I haven't reviewed the appraisal report, um, and I'd be curious to see how they arrived at that figure, but it's roughly ten thousand dollars an acre, which is what you'd expect to pay for undeveloped land in Cumberland County. So, that part makes sense, but no one can really do anything with a, a four-acre strip of land, which is, because of the dimensions, it can't be developed.
Right.
So, that really depresses the fair market value considerably. Here are discussions a lot to have with Norfolk Southern, um, in terms of negotiations and talking about, you know, potential acquisition.
I'm certainly very interested in, in pursuing this situation with the railroad. I think those discussions would be very good to have. It sounds like a win-win if it can be negotiated well.
Here's the, the piece of land that's in question is, you see, this is green raised right here. It's this small piece. It just covered it up. It's attached to the railroad, um, and it'll give you what is, what it's supposed to be. Uh, it's around twenty-seven hundred feet long. At the, at the widest, behind the sewer plant is where, this is the, where it goes around behind the sewer plant, um, and this is where they're proposing to put the bridge in to go from the trail to the park. So, it's this piece that comes down around here is the one they're talking about. Um, this is Silver Spring Township down here on the other side of Church Road between Trendon and Church, um, and then Silver Spring Township is up here. So, there's some question about whether PP&L owns the right, the railroad right-of-way, um, down here on the bottom of the, between Church and, and Trendon. But the Monroe pump station is in that property, um, and then the property that you see right here is Darrell Ken, or off to the side there, that's Darrell Kenis' property. Um, so, there's going to be a right-of-way that's going to be required. This trail's going to go across Darrell Kenis' property, and then there's another residential property there that it's also been across. Currently, the, the sewer plant is using that, um, it pentangly is using that property for storage and a few other things back there.
We're not up for action tonight, but I would encourage you again to review the memo that they gave us on March first with the, um, six different considerations. We could take action at the next meeting and authorization if council chooses to go that, or the six or five, I'll stick to.
So, just to be clear, so I understand you're going to wait until, like, a future meeting to make a formal decision with respect to...
Correct, because we're not only agenda for, for action, we're just on discussion of the request for the South Mountain Charlie Greenway. So, I think we would, we may have to wait till the next meeting to get direction on it.
Well, I, I, I don't see there being a problem with council greenlighting my ability to work with Manager Soski and the rest of the group to at least initiate the process in, in reaching out to Norfolk Southern to get that process moving. I, do you see any, any...
No, I, I mean, I, it, like you said, they back with a thousand dollars or a hundred thousand, and I think that's when council would probably take action on it, and I, so...
So, I think that's, yeah, that's really the next decision point for council, with the understanding we're not going to, uh, invest a lot of resources in this, um, without your knowledge or approval. If you want, you want to move forward, keep the process moving forward, and come back to you with either an update or a, a solid, um, proposal for the acquisition of the, of the right-of-way.
Does, uh, council, does council care about that?
Yes, very much.
And then we're weighing off the rest of the considerations until there's some feedback from Norfolk Southern.
Yes, that's my recommendation.
May I make a request, Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Uh, somehow, can you make your bills when you're doing this? We're getting very close to the thirty-five grand. Uh, I'd like to, I want to make sure where we're at and try to figure out where we're going to pull money from if they blow over that thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, we need separately invoiced time, bring under pocket.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
That's it.
Anything from personnel today?
Nothing to report for this time.
Anyone, citizen's comments? Anyone have citizen's comments?
Rhonda Galbraith, Six First Street, Sharon Avenue, the stop sign lady. Um, my understanding, and I, I kind of missed that too, because this is a bit of a catch-up outside after the last meeting, hoping to be coming in late to kind of fill in, fill in no-stop signs, children playing signs. But I guess, I have more com, questions than comments. Um, so I understand you have to do a traffic study before you do the stop signs, add stop signs. Do we know how many vehicles have to be crossed? Is that in?
Two thousand, two thousand a day.
Two thousand a day?
I believe that, that was in the stop sign warrant, key paperwork that was sent to us.
If you send us your questions, we'll get answers.
Who I send it to?
Send them to, uh, Mrs. Soski. If you want to copy, you can do that as well.
And your emails are on the borough website?
I will give your mine before you leave.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
You have mine. You have mine.
Okay, sure, you got it, okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
The mom needs to stop.
Okay.
Same none, other person?
Uh, Montrix, buy your pool pass. I'm sure, I'm sure that'll be, which is coming up on March twenty-sixth. You all are invited. You have your invitation and invite the public. We'd love to have you at the square while we, uh, while we, downtown McCansford partnership and where there's all the McCansford community, we're down in the building.
I have nothing to add.
Hey, get around, we're going to take that picture for the Time Castle.
Nothing.
So, is there a question?
Nothing else.
Okay.
I received a request in Councilman Deering regarding, uh, the Four Minutes City Initiative, and I'm actually going to hand things over to Chief Neff, because I know that he's already been reached out to by the county to be part of that.
Yeah. Um, I think person was clear when you said that if there's a car that you have to rush, I think they're in third and transfer. So, what do you get? Um, ever since the A.D. has been out there, you know, EMS is obviously, they, they use it. Also, the police department has used them as well. They have six hundred minute system and crews. Um, whenever I became borough chief, one of my first initiatives I got taken care of was the fire department is also a natural dispatch for a, the, if one of the other units were dispatched. Anyway, we could all add up very quickly. So, you're getting two different authorities coming in for any kind of patient cardiac arrest. So, now, there's been initiative, the county sent out an inquiry. Uh, U.P.N.C. Pinker Foundation is partners with, uh, the Peyton Walker Foundation. The Peyton Walker Foundation is, was started from a one child that was taken way too early because of a cardiac arrest. So, his mother started this foundation. Now, the county sent out a... So this mother started this foundation. Now, [inaudible] survey, what they're looking for was not just first responders, but eligible people that are certified with AED already, but leading the [inaudible] as citizens of the municipality. Leading the [inaudible] in, uh, [inaudible] has distributed three hundred of these little AED machines. It's [inaudible], you know, they put them [inaudible]. And they're very clever. They come out, and then the county gets the, um, dispatch on it, it goes out. It buzz on the wall, say [inaudible]. And they're associated location and then telling you to text in the message where to go with this. And it'll grow and wants the distribution of these machines out there, it'll grow and [inaudible]. Like two in that area, two or three. So that was the first round that they did. Now, um, I thought I'd go for one because I'm a, you know, resident, and as well, there's thirty few, a couple of those other fire officers have gone there. That are residents in the borough. So we haven't done anything yet with the distribution. They're, they're looking at three hundred, but the four minute goes to, they're trying to cut down that eight minute [inaudible]. With time dispatch, you could deep down on the patient and [inaudible]. So that's where they're gonna cut that in half, 'cause your certain percentages are so much higher, you know, you're able to rely on persons. So if you hear about four minute city, that is it. Uh, I'm sure that we're [inaudible] the county with the distribution once they come out. If there's any available units as well, that, uh, you're able to send over online. If you, if you're [inaudible] the rest of it, uh, you can go on YouTube and just visit the four minute city. And there's about a four or five minute, um, program that identifies the worst of it. And it shows the mechanism that you'll be getting. So any questions with that?
Chief, is there anything that we should be doing to promote this initiative within the borough?
So I think, what I understand from county, that probably over, over three hundred units will be distributed. So [inaudible] people that does that much interest in it, so. And interesting comments, uh, emergency services. And when I think on the house side, like when the county's [inaudible] distribution, you do, [inaudible] community in one of the [inaudible]. So what are the main differences other than this, and myself, Chief Neff?
If you care of any expansion of the program or additional units that are available?
Well, there is, if you'd like to participate and donate some money towards one, there is avenues to take on that. You could also, um, you could initiate for a donation, a gift of five hundred dollars, which sponsors one AED for a one year service, and five hundred to sponsor, uh, the unit for five years. So if you'd like to contact the county to participate with that, you're [inaudible] as well.
If you have any information on that, could you distribute that so we can be happy? Correct, thank you.
That's all. And excuse me for this cough, but the last couple meetings of burden was a, a [inaudible] one of my six days over there. That's all I have.
Thank you, everyone. You can enjoy.